The RSA 79E statute provides for a baseline of five years of tax relief for the substantial rehabilitation of a structure that's contributing historically and vibrantly to a downtown. It allows additional four years for an historic rehabilitation, and then an additional two years beyond that for the creation of housing. Our goal and hope for the seminary and the old high school is to convert both buildings into very nice market rate apartments. We don't know the exact number yet, but it could be approximately 70. We would be paying close attention to the historic integrity of the buildings and bring them back to life in sort of a vibrant way. Our request is nine years, which isn't 11. It's for this reason. The five years base is a given in an application. Oh, it's not a given. If it's the base, then we're seeking additional two years because we're doing residential, and we're seeking half of the four years for the historic renovation. And the reason for that is there is a caveat that the historic work needs to meet the U.S. Department of the Interior Secretary's standards for historic rehabilitation. We've done many of these projects to meet those. We feel we will be able to make this look just like those, but there are some new rules at the Secretary's, Department of Interior in DC that would make it impossible to meet for this project. So we feel like asking for half of that is appropriate because we will create the look from the outside. That seminary will look like it was when it was built, and the high school will be historically accurate, but we need to add windows and things to the high school, and that would be something that we couldn't do under a strict interpretation of the historic standards. So essentially, we want to convert this property into market rate apartments. We would go through the process with the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board, provided we can get through this process here tonight. And we look forward to answering. I can answer any questions. That's just sort of a rough concept of what we're doing, but I'm here to answer any questions from you folks.
Eric, just a point of clarification. I think you meant the Planning Board and the Historic District Commission, not the Conservation Commission.
I'm sorry. Thank you for that. Correct. Yeah.
Okay, and one other clarification. Now, when you say the high school, you mean the Science Building?
That's right.
Brick building there.
Yes, and for the benefit of those that haven't been following us closely, we would only be the gymnasium is not part of this, nor is the old, the field that's far off, the baseball field that's away. We're just working on the Science Building and the seminary.
One thing I know the group asked for that maybe you can do and maybe you can't at this time is a breakdown between the dollars between the seminary and the Science Building. Mainly for the situation that say you do the seminary and then decide not to do the Science Building, that we know where the breakdown is between the two. I don't think it's going to happen, but I think it's legitimate.
That's certainly something we can follow up on. We did respond to the request. We thought they wanted to know the rough cost categories for the entire project, which we provided. We're happy to break that out, you know, following this meeting.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? My whole concern with this is the seminary building itself. I don't remember any historic significance, the science wing, or see any need to preserve it. You know, I don't know where the rest of my fellow boards are, but board members, but I really have no concerns about the science wing on how you want to rehab that.
When that came up in our meeting, and I think we basically thought that the age of the building warranted that, that it is a significant part of Kingston's history, and that building's a lot older than you think it is.
We're at 50. I believe that building is about 50 years old, so it's creeping up into the historic aspect in terms of a 1970s architecture. And when we originally met with Mr. Chinberg on this while I was still sitting on the board, we kind of chuckled about it a bit, but the windows would have to be different because you'd want to have security and insulation, better insulation than was provided in the 1970s. So while we don't think of it as historic building, it's 50 years old.
But do we want to restrict him on how he's gonna, what he's gonna do with it? I mean, my concern is the seminary. That's my biggest concern, and to be, I'll say it. It's my only concern. The rest is property, and I don't want to restrict them for...
I think we all basically agree with that statement, and anybody can speak up, but at the same time, we don't want to lose the kind of the qualities of that building. I mean, we understand windows have to be changed and stuff like that.
If I could add something here, I agree with everything all of you have just said. Certainly, the higher historic significance is the seminary building. We initially thought, well, maybe we'll just do the seminary, and if nobody cares about the Science Building, we could consider demolishing it. We just cannot make the numbers work for the scale of the project on the seminary building alone, so we actually need that additional square footage. So our thought is, the additional square footage that's in the Science Building. So our thought is the seminary building will be done, you know, very pristinely in an historic manner. The Science Building will keep the sort of feeling and integrity of it, but in some of those places where there are windows, there might be a patio door. There might be patios outside. So we would still, it would still look historically like an old Science Building, but it would be clearly repurposed in a modern way, whereas a seminary from the outside will look pretty much the way it was when it was built. That would be our intent.
And I think the, all the appraisals and everything that we've been looking at, we're pretty much assuming that that was going to be a teardown. I think there were steps that the school took to take off the severely damaged portions of it, but the intent here is because this is in the Historic District, it's a known entity, what it is right now. So obviously, we don't want him putting, you know, modern art masterpieces on top of it or something like that, but certainly we want to allow the flexibility to make it a usable building for residential occupation.
I just, I don't know. I've never met him, but I know of his properties in Exeter, and he does a good job of matching his, you know, the architecture to the surroundings. None of his buildings stand out as an eyesore or, you know, subpar quality. I think he has a flair for what fits in, and I don't want, like I said, I'm concerned about the seminary with this whole thing. The science, I'd let him do, I'd give him carte blanche on that, because I know he would make it match to look pleasant.
I think, I think we're gonna give him a lot of leeway, but not an open...
And I'm fine with that. Some leeway, but not an open book, where we can work together and come up with something that...
One other question that came out of it is where the actual property line is separating the high school from Chase Field and whether the wetlands are included in this land or the Chase Field side.
I thought we tried to answer that in our response, and okay, it does not include Chase Fields nor the wetlands, so there would be no change to the town's use of Chase Field.
Yeah, and correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, but the Chase Field was not part of the sale.
That is correct. Correct.
The Chase Fields remains with the school district.
Correct.
Glenn, I don't know who's supposed to be doing this at this point, Phil or me, but go ahead.
Well, Rich, I turn it over to you.
Okay.
Okay, just a, just a comment to follow up on the, on the Science Building. You know, Kevin's, Kevin's initial response was my initial response when we first walked this property and talked about the potential of a project there, that, you know, I really didn't think that the Science Building had any historic value, but as we talked about it more and with our town planner, Glenn Greenwood pointed out to me that, well, you know, as Ellie was saying, it's a lot older than we think it is, and it's not as old as the seminary building, but it is, it does have historical value from, from that time period that it was built. It's part of the fabric and the rhythm of the Historic District because it's been there for that long, and but, but also that, that it should have more leeway and flexibility in its adaptation to what the project needs to have, so. But the review of what it looks like is going to happen at a deeper level when it goes to Historic District Commission. At that point, that's when, that's when a lot of that will get discussed, and if there's anything that the, that the Select Board wants in advance of that, then it ought to have those words as part of this hearing so that it gets carried into the Historic District Commission as part of the, part of that discussion. You know, for instance, if the Select Board had any, any specific guidance that it would like with regard to the, to the Science Building, it would be good to pass that along so that when it gets to Historic District Commission, it can be considered.
And I would jump in and add that, that the school board had, the school and the town had two original appraisals a few years back as we looked at the direction we wanted to take for that property. And both appraisers said that that Science Building should be leveled to the ground because of all the water damage, especially in the lower levels. It was pretty bad, and it's to Mr. Chinberg's credit that he sees some redeeming value in that property. So I think it behooves us to work with him to move it forward.
Ernie, you have any additional comments or want to go over any of your comments from the meeting?
I just have one, one question, I guess. With respect to the Science Building, if the notion of partial tax relief for partial completion under the Secretary of the Interior's standards, I'm wondering whether the RSA actually allows for something like that or not. Is the completion under the, under the Secretary of the Interior's standards a required aspect in total, or can it be passed out, so to speak, so that if you do part under the Secretary of the Interior's standards, you can get part of the tax relief?
We think that that's true based on Section 79-E, 7, colon, 5. Basically, it says the duration of the tax relief period. Item 4 says that the governing body can adopt local guidelines to assist in determining the appropriate duration of the tax assessment relief period. So we're thinking that that allows you the latitude to say, okay, we think that this is appropriate to go for nine years instead of 11 based on these extenuating circumstances. So I think that that gives you the ammunition you need.
Plus, don't forget, it's going to be two years before you really get going. So you got, you really, it's really an 11 year, the clock doesn't start ticking till the project is complete in terms of tax relief. So you're really going to have 11 years, basically, because it's probably going to take the two years to get the building up and, the two buildings up and going. Am I correct in that, Eric?
Yes, but the, the value to the, of the relief is the number of years following occupancy permit. So you're correct. Starts then. So, yeah, I mean, obviously, 11 would be better from our standpoint, but I understand the pickle it puts you in, and so that's why we compromise at nine.
So basically, how I'm understanding is if he finishes the seminary completely, just say in two years, which I know won't happen, just put a timeline on it. That clock starts on that if we separate the two projects, and then when he goes to the Science Building and finishes that, the clock starts again, is how I'm understanding it.
That could be the case, but frankly, it would be our intention to do everything at once.
Okay. But if there's occupancy permits written, that's when that clock starts on those units.
That, that could be a way to do it, sure. I hadn't thought of it that way, but that, that would be fine with me, although we would, as I said, set a goal to just do it all in one phase.
Okay. Margie, you have anything now to know that it's not in the wetlands, and you're muted, so.
That's good, because when I looked at the survey map, you know, the property was marked out all the way to Chase Street, and I had understood that, you know, your project was just going to the dividing line there. It's sort of halfway. So that was good to find out. I'm not really familiar with that wet area, but I know it's there. So it is not good for building. It should be left alone.
It's actually pretty far from the building. It's probably, I don't know, 100, 150 feet from the edge of the gym.
Yeah.
The wetlands.
It's a good, it's a good walk, so.
Deb Powers, you have anything?
No, I'm good. It sounds, it sounds good. Well thought out.
Okay. Anybody else? Glenn, you have any follow up after your?
Just, just one comment based on the last discussion you had a few minutes ago about possibly separating the, the relief period for, into two pieces. You know, Eric's already said that it's his intention to do it all at once, and I think from a town record-keeping perspective, it might be advisable to do it all at once. You start the clock all at once, and it goes forward. If you start separating it out, it could get a little complicated.
My, my only problem with that is what if he finishes seminary, has people in it, and it takes him five more years to finish the Science Building? I don't, I mean, I know his work, and that typically doesn't happen, but to me, we need to play each side of the card and say, well, what if it does?
It will, but that's his, that's on him if he leaves half the project not done.
Well, no, it's not on us. We're not collecting taxes on the part that is done.
No, but we start taxing them on the whole property.
I, I think we're getting a feel here. I think it's one project, one timeline.
Yeah.
Forward.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. I'll probably be there by the time it's finished anyway, so.
We'll have a code enforcement officer, but then they will help us move it along.
Right. Well, and, and Eric's already said that, you know, the, the numbers, the numbers don't work for this project unless the whole thing is done and functioning, and so it's, it's obviously going to be in, in his best interest from a company perspective to get this thing done and get it up and running.
I'm agreeing with everything. I'm just saying, what if, so.
Oh, I...
And I got a rule on the what if, so that's fine. Anybody else? Don, you haven't said much. You have any?
No, 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 I think it's great.
And I don't think, I don't recognize, I think all these other people for the next.
Well, you might have, this is a public hearing, so you might have members of the public who wish to speak on it.
Yeah, are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this project? If so, it sounds reasonable.
Sounds reasonable. Thank you.
And you're from where? What's your address?
Oh, Bob Berg, 18 Jericho, here for the Toromeo, but, you know, what I heard, sounds, sounds decent. Thank you.
I have a curiosity question.
Okay.
How do you squeeze 70 apartments out of those two buildings?
Well, but the one thing that we're discovering these days is that because construction costs and regulatory costs have gone up far faster than people's incomes, apartments are getting smaller. So we're trying to make the, we call it living large and small places. So our apartments, you know, a two-bedroom apartment, you know, 20 years ago might have been 1,000 square feet. Today, they might be 750 to 800 square feet. So it might be only 50 that we can fit, but we just, we'd rather come in with a number and not, and solve parking and all of our sewage and water issues for a high number, and then go lower than the other way around.
Okay, that makes sense.
And thank you for that. Phil, I guess with that, I'll turn it back over to you.
Does someone want to lay out the next steps just for the viewing public and where we, I'm assuming there's a follow-on hearing?
What, what, do, I don't think, I didn't think we needed more than the one hearing, Phil. I think we can move to grant a 79E relief.
The, the question is, and I haven't got the RSA in front of me, but do you actually need to, to take a vote on the decision on this? Or can you do it for, within a time window after the public hearing?
I don't know the answer to that either. Mr. Chinberg may know the answer, since he's been through so many of these.
In our, in the other municipal, we've done this, and I believe the council just votes on our application on the term of the relief, and then following that, we work with the, whomever is delegated from you folks, the committee, to do the covenant, which for you, you know, to draft a legal document that, but I guess we're looking for an affirmative vote from the council tonight that you've agreed to the nine years of relief.
And I think we could do that at our hearing, correct? We don't have to wait to come out of the hearing and go to the board meeting. We can be a moment if you want to do that.
I think the only reason that you, you would want to wait is if, is if as a result of the hearing, you felt you had more information to, you know, to be sifting through or information to gather or, but, but if you're all set, there should be no reason that you can't do the vote.
I'm ready.
My feeling is, everything's said.
I think the best thing would be to close the public hearing and then take the vote.
You can do that. Whatever, oh, vote twice if you want, Kevin. Doesn't matter to me.
No, I'm just saying, I think that would be the proper...
I, I, I think he's right.
Close the meet, the hearing, and then take action.
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, all right. So with that, we will close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion on the timeline as applied for 79E.
Of nine years.
Of nine years.
I, I still move that to grant a 9-year window.
Okay, I've got a motion from Ms. Alessio, a second from Mr. Wilson. Further discussion?
I, I support the nine years. I think it's a, it's a nice compromise. I, I'll be honest, I'm struggling on when the timeline starts. So I think that needs to be spelled out in the motion as well. But I just struggle with that. I think nine years is a compromise. I think it's great, but if we're gonna give him two years, you know, you might as well call it 11 years and it starts today.
Motion, motion, well, I mean, I think typically it starts, like he said, with occupancy.
Correct.
The RSA states when it starts.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's two years, it's, it's, it's when construction complete, from what I remember, when the construction is done, it, the clock starts ticking.
Correct.
Do you want to modify your motion to say that?
Well, you'd...
Recognizing that there's probably up to two years for construction purposes, the clock starts. It's, it's by RSA. That's strictly in the RSA's.
Yeah, it's per the RSA. You don't have to say it.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I just want to say, you know, the nine years was a compromise. I think there were people on the board who wanted less. Obviously, Mr. Chinberg wanted more. The enormity of this project has to come into play on this. There is a lot of issues on the seminary. There's clearly a lot of issues on the Science Building since everybody thought it was going to be torn down. All those factors come into play, and, you know, we're trying to play the long-term game here, where these are going to be longstanding moneymakers for the town, so. You know, this is, this is a compromise, and I, and, you know, unfortunately, in a compromise, not everybody's happy about it, but I think it's enough to move this project forward and not have that building fall in on itself. And I think that's something everybody in town can agree on, so.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's also important to, for, for folks who might be listening to this and not understanding it perhaps, to understand that, that for the period of time from when the project gets started to the time that it, it's occupied, it's going to be paying taxes at the assessed rate, and that, that property has never paid taxes, so there's a...
That is correct.
So, so there's a, there's a positive benefit here even during the development phase of the project.
Good point.
Yep, thank you, Glenn. All right, further discussion? All right, hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Alessio?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Coombs?
Yes.
St. James?
Yes.
And Wilson?
Yes.
You want him?
Yes.
Okay, well, this will continue with the committee. Thank you, Mr. Chinberg, for coming in, and you obviously know the next steps as we're moving forward, and thank you again for the committee for donating your time to help us sort through this thing. And any resources you may need, please don't hesitate to call.
Thank you all very much.
We look forward to seeing the end results.
Likewise. Thank you. All right, well, good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, just, just, just a quick word that, that once, once he's ready to go with, with his plans, he'd be bringing him first to Historic District Commission, and then once he passes that hurdle, he would be in front of Planning Board. So he's got, he's got, he's got a ways to go before he's actually got, you know, approved plans and ready to build, but.
Yeah, and the, who works on the covenant now, Glenn? Is that through the Heritage Commission, the group, the, the task group that worked to review the project?
Well, I think it's still the selectmen's responsibility because they're the, I mean, they're the governing body. But if Debbie's still on, or Ernie, maybe you could clarify it. Maybe, maybe with the help of the committee, but I think, but I think it's the Select Board's responsibility.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with that, Glenn.
On my radar.
But, but, I mean, along with our town planner, I mean, I'm sure that the 79E committee would be more than happy to, you know, review docs and, and assist the board in whatever way you need us to.
Okay. Thank you, Glenn.
Sure.
Guess I'm getting this on the HDC. Too funny.
Oh, yes.
All right, moving along to scheduled appointments. Susan, you said that Kingston Days Committee had canceled?
Right, right. They're, they'll be coming to the next meeting.
Okay. Following appointment is the Jerica Road Residence, RE Toromeo Industries blasting sound mitigation. And so, Mr. Berg, you had sent me an email, and then I saw on Friday that you guys were coming in, so I skipped the step of telling you that it would be helpful for you to come in so we could explain this to everybody.
Yep.
I'll go, I'll turn it over to you as you schedule the appointment. If you want to, if you have questions, you can pose them to the entire board.
Yep, I'll be, I'll be brief. Kevin, grab your pillow, Kevin. You're not drinking adult beverages in the town hall area. Okay. All right, I got this email, and it just said they met, you know, we met with the folks at Toromeo regarding the trees being taken down, that they would be building a vegetated berm along the north wall property once the weather allows for it. They discussed it with the engineer. A berm would be a better solution versus a fence, so it can be planted and will continue to allow native growth that will mitigate noise from the pit. Anticipation is mid-April before work begins. And you had said we could follow up in May, but we did have some questions. I, I forget, Susan, if I emailed them to you for the board, but I'll go through the questions briefly. Tonight may not be the time, but basically wanted to see if we could get a, a copy of that agreement, Toromeo's agreement with the Town of Kingston. And in addition to the berm, it would be good to have the following in writing, excuse me. How tall would the berm be? What's the blast plan for the north wall? Has the blasting been terminated permanently? If not, how often will it be and for how many months or years, months? Will the pit be expanded, be expanded further? Can Toromeo consider pulling back to the south from where they are now to provide some additional setback from the neighborhood? How deep is the pit going to be? 200 feet, 1,000 feet, et cetera? You can tell I'm not a geologist, but how deep would the pit be? What does the town have on record as hours of operation? They start shortly after 6:00 AM now. Lots of beeping and noise and that type of thing. And one neighbor was still concerned, I'm sure we have, we have several neighbors with children. One, one neighbor was concerned about the safety for their young... One, one neighbor was concerned about the safety for their young children. They want to know if there would still be a safety fence, uh, either on top of the berm or behind the berm. I'm thinking myself, some of the teenagers that use the, uh, possibly Valley Lane or, uh, that go, you know, dirt biking or ATV-ing, for instance, that, uh, where they once may have ATV'd on the property, not knowing it was Tormayo's, going to be a, you know, whatever, X-hundred-foot drop into the pit. I'd be concerned for the safety of the kids in the neighborhood. So I, I know I just spewed out a lot of, uh, questions, but those were the types of questions that we had for, uh, the agreement with Tormayo.
Okay, um, so I have your email here, so I'm just gonna answer what I can and point you in the right direction on the other ones. Unless other board members have something to add in, feel free to do so.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I kind of think maybe we should talk about those and go through them as a board. And then come up with what we think we can say something to them, what we can't.
I mean, it was a matter of public record what we discussed when you and I gave a, a report on there. And so I'm assuming the agreement you're referring to is a written agreement between ourselves and the people from Tormayo. Is that correct, Mr. Berg?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I got the, but it, it didn't indicate whether anything was in writing or it was just verbal or.
This was a friendly conversation between the town and the business owners.
Okay, and just, just as an aside too, not to interrupt you, but it is appreciated. So, thank you. It's a step in the right direction and, uh, we appreciate it. You know, we're just looking for, uh, hopefully something in writing and, and preferably some more details. So thank you for, uh, the work and getting at least a, a verbal agreement with Mr. Tormayo.
Right. Again, this was a proposed fix to this and it wasn't anything in writing or anything like that. It was at, at the request of your neighbors, you know, to go and try and mitigate the trees that were taken out and, and, you know, work on this problem. So I, I think it'd probably be a good time to point out that Legally is under, on no obligation to do any of this. So.
Okay.
The detail as far as that goes, um, what they were going to utilize was something that they had gotten from the Bureau of Mines to specifically to mitigate sound and, um, act as kind of a, a barrier to entry. So when they were planning on putting it in, they were going to provide a detail for us. And he was looking for it from the Bureau of Mines and, and he was going to get input from them as far as, you know, heights and everything, given the circumstance. Uh, as far as the north wall, uh, Dawn, you can probably weigh in on this because I know you made the initial contact on that. Has there been any, any change to that agreement that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of. No, they said they would not blast on the, uh, north wall until, um, until we gave them further notice.
Do you, uh, do you expect to do that, uh, Selectmen Briggs or? Do you expect to give them notice that they can continue blasting or you don't know?
I, I, we have, we haven't had that discussion. I, I would assume that we want, and I'm only speaking for myself, I would assume that we want to have that berm put up prior to any blasting. That's up to the board though.
Okay.
In, in our meeting.
And apologies, uh, Selectmen, uh, and Chairman Coombs, if, if I shouldn't be asking questions as, as we go along, I'll hold off.
In, in our meeting, they act like they would have that berm done before they moved closer with blasting.
And, and I think, you know, Rich, you can, I mean, I, the, the thing I took away from it is it's a wait-and-see approach. You know, it took seventy years for those trees to grow in there at least. So this isn't going to be something that's fixed overnight, unfortunately.
I agree with that, but I also saw willingness to try to help solve this problem.
Yeah, and that's what I was just going to say is, you know, we talked about a fence briefly, but, you know, they referenced the Bureau of Mines. You know, a vegetated buffer is going to grow in more vegetation. It's, they're going to put some trees and, and things on top of it. That's just going to continue to get more sound absorption in it and, you know, naturally vegetate. So it's going to do its thing. A, a, a highway barrier is just going to be there. It's not going to do anything but what it does immediately. And so that, that's what that provides. And on the fence thing, I think putting a fence on there is going to, you know, if you have to add more layers to it, increase it in height, you know, a fence is going to prohibit you from doing that. It's going to create a situation where you've got a fence in the way if you have to make alterations to it. So if it's, you know, the wait-and-see approach, they seem willing to hold off on blasting on there until we've mitigated, you know, the sound issues and to a point where, you know, they can go back to working on there.
Okay, so they are going to be submitting a, uh, a more detailed plan at, at some point prior to the April or May timeframe then.
I, I would think it would just be a cutaway detailed design of what, you know, if you were looking at the side of the berm, if it was sliced open, how it should be constructed and, and the heights that are recommended. And, and that's what they're going to check on is the heights that, you know, need to be put into place.
Is that the type of thing that will go just strictly through the Selectmen or does it also pass through the Planning Board?
Again, he is under no legal obligation whatsoever to do any of these things. So this is just meant to be a, an agreement, um, you know, between parties.
But, but at the same time, Phil asked them in a meeting to try to add some trees to the top and they were willing to do that. I mean, what we asked for, they agreed to do.
Okay, and, uh, for Selectmen Briggs and for the Selectmen in general, uh, you know, if, if they do, then put up the berm and request, uh, to continue blasting, it, it would be helpful as a Butters to be notified. I, I know he's, uh, um, you know, we questioned whether he's grandfathered in because of the excavation report I mentioned, but presuming that he is grandfathered in, uh, pending anything else, uh, do you think that, uh, we would be notified if he was going to begin significant blasting, uh, on the north wall just so we could get an idea of how, how often for, for years, for months? How deep would the pit end up being? Would it be a, you know, three-hundred-foot drop down to, uh, down there? That would be helpful to know. But the berm is certainly a good, uh, first step. Thank you.
So the a, as far as expansion plans or anything like that, we did not discuss that.
Okay.
I, I think the thing I found in this process is, is in talking with the state police and sitting in with the fire chief on this, the town is looking to take a more active role in that, i.e., you know, main drilling and blasting has a list of people that they're supposed to contact when they blast there, and that's the limit of it. And I don't think that's the right answer. I think the town probably needs to maintain a master list of people like we do when we have agendas for anything. You can get on a distribution list and we'll send it out to you and let you know. So we're going to start taking a more active role in maintaining that list of people. So that we know who wants to be aware of that and we can kind of just randomly sample people if we need to and they're, you know, if they're finding out, you know, if their address, their, their concerns aren't being addressed. The state police were fairly convinced that it's just good management practice for these guys to, you know, take care of the residents and take care of the people surrounding. But in hearing complaints, we don't know that that's the case. So that's what the town is going to be doing proactively to, you know, as far as the blasting side of things goes, to make sure that there's an active list that we're maintaining beyond what main drilling and blasting is doing. Again, this is a wait-and-see thing. This is a very recent problem and we're going to have to keep adding on to this as, as issues arise. But it also isn't a blank check to rectify thirty years of being right next to a court. We can't fix that. Oh, you know, it's, it's going to be there. You know, we're not going to be proceeding. So I'm sorry, I, I just want to point to you because you keep raising your hand, so.
Oh, oh, Sarah, yeah, I just wanted to say, Sarah, that, uh, and we're getting a little echo, but hopefully I can, people can hear me. But, uh, as in a butter, you know, we were aware that Tormayo was there and we wondered what might happen. We, again, we, it's too late now, but we thought we might get some notice prior to, uh, any expansion. And that's not against you guys. It's just, again, if I was going to cut down some trees next to my neighbor's lot, it certainly, I might not even ask them, but I'd say, here's my plan. Do you have any significant concerns?
And I do feel like we've opened the dialogue between, you know, the town and Mr. Tormayo, and I don't think that was open before. And so there is a line of communication open now and, you know, as, like I said, as these issues arise, we can deal with them on a one-on-one basis, but.
Yep. Okay. All right. I'm sorry, Sarah. Uh, this is Tagliari.
Hang on, Dawn, what'd you say?
So, um, I, last week I did speak with a gentleman from the Alteration of Terrain Bureau. And, uh, they sent down the Seacoast, people to take a look at the pit. So as far as expansion and all of that, they're, they're looking that over at this time, which we should have some more information on that.
And I should point out, Mr. Tormayo did say, everybody who could possibly have any, you know, between the DES, MSHA, everybody else, they've been there twice in the past four months. So I, I'm sure you guys have been working the phones and they haven't found anything that we're aware of and that he's aware of that, you know, they've been doing wrong. So I'm sorry, uh, Ms. Tagliari.
You're muted.
You're unmuted. You need to unmute yourself.
Alright, folks. I work in IT and you think I would know better. I apologize. Can everyone hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, so I just, I do want to echo what, what Mr. Berg said. We, we do appreciate that the dialogue is now there. But I, I, I think the board can appreciate where our concern is. While this is a relatively new problem, the proposal of, of a plan to mitigate from according at least to the Google Earth satellite images of over two-hundred-feet worth of trees being removed in our yard. This is not the first time we've been told that something might be submitted to mitigate all the trees that have been removed and the bulldozing that's occurred in our yard. And of course, I do have concerns that a potential wait-and-see method, we're going to build the berm. It might work, it might not. And obviously we have legitimate concerns, you know, if, if we keep hearing the sound from, you know, the beeping of the trucks at six in the morning, the, the excavation starting at seven and jackhammer going until 5:00 PM, we have concerns that our property values are not going to be improved at all when you look out our kitchen window and we see a, a berm. I do completely understand that natural vegetation is obviously more appealing, you know, to the eye. I'm just concerned as to what type of a berm is going to provide the exact, um, buffer that we need that we had over two-hundred-feet worth of seventy-five-plus-foot trees is going to provide. Not only from a sound perspective, but also from a vibration perspective. Because of course our other concern is, yes, it is noisy, yes, the blasts are loud. But once they start blasting on that north wall, the, which is the ledge that we share, how much more of that are we going to feel now that the trees that are there, all, all those roots are dead? And how long is it going to take? And so I do have concerns. And I don't really, and I understand that Mr. Tormayo isn't legally obligated to, but what he has done is, is quite detrimental to all of us Butters. And so I just, I had to go on record saying that. I, and again, I do appreciate everybody opening that dialogue. But as, as the Butters, you can understand where, why we still have so many questions.
I, I can understand your question or your concern, but I, I mean, the option is still certainly there for you to, you know, pursue him civilly for that matter, but I don't know that he'd be really hot to trot on putting a berm up if you guys are taking him to court. Yeah, I, I understand, you know, it's not going to be the same. Like I said, it took a long time for those trees to grow in there and all of that stuff to get in there. And it's, there's nothing that's going to replace that other than seventy years of, of growth. And, and there's very little that anyone can do to turn back the clock on that. Now, that being said, as far as vibration and everything like that, the town is now armed with a lot more knowledge, knowing, you know, where things need to be. Again, you know, we're going to generate a list of people who want to know when blasts are going off. And obviously when they're going off near your houses, you guys are going to, if they're going off near that north wall with that vegetation removed, at that time, it'll be a request to main drilling and blasting to put the sensory equipment right near you, um, to measure those things. But, you know, the state police guys kind of were hard-pressed to remember a time where it, it went above the acceptable scales. And unfortunately, you know, what people feel and what's on these sensors are kind of two different things. And that's just really kind of a state-level thing where they set these standards. And it's pretty common across the country where a lot of the blasting and things like that, a lot of these rules are just, you know, he shows a book like this thick and there's like two pages regarding residents and outside, you know, Butters. The rest of it's about storage and, and how you take care of dynamite and things like that. So, um, that's a lot higher than our pay grade, you know, addressing those things. Really what we're trying to do is, unfortunately, it's, it's a as-they-happen kind of thing that we're, we're dealing with now. We build the berm, we see what it does. And if it needs to be added to or, or it's not providing what we need, we kind of take that, that, at that time. But, um, you know, it's going to take some time for that to grow in with vegetation. It's going to take some time for those things to, to suss out. And I, I, I wish I had an easier, straightforward, quicker answer for you, but it's, we're doing the best with what we've got right now and, and all I can ask is for patience.
No, I understand that. Uh, you know, folks recognize that it took seventy years for those trees to grow and they were all cut down within the course of a summer. And, you know, we will continue, my, my property specifically, we will continue to have main drilling and blasting come out because what we've been asking for is the readings. And so the largest blast that we're aware of is the one that we played for the board back on October fifteenth, I believe, where you heard all the china in my kitchen rattle. That was only a point four. And according to the state, they can go up to a two-point-oh. So they could have gone five times greater. And as it was, we were having things shaking, rattling and rolling. So, you know, I do understand there's a difference between what you feel and, and what you can hear. So we're trying to get that, that information as well. And it's just, again, it's just unfortunate that, you know, the actions that occurred in the course of a very short period of time are so detrimental to so many residents. But again, I do appreciate the board at least opening that dialogue with, with Mr. Tormayo and Mr. Tormayo at least willing to do some type of, uh, mitigation for, you know, what we've all now experienced since last summer. Thank you.
Yeah, and I will say, uh, you know, Mr. Wilson brought the point to him. You know, perhaps it's better to do smaller blasts more, you know, more regularly than, you know, a big blast where, you know, these things are going to take place. And, and with regards to the one you played, I mean, he did point out that they had a, a shelf they had to go down to. So they, they did drill a little further than they usually do and that did contribute to that being such a large blast. And we passed along our sentiment that we felt it would be better if that didn't take place much in the future. You know, smaller blasts would be better for all parties involved. And, and I think, I, I don't want to say they agreed to that, but they certainly were taking it under consideration.
Well, I appreciate that. I mean, I, I will say, as of last week, because they did blast last week, we have now had ten consecutive months of blasting for a total of fourteen blasts in that time period. So from my perspective, you know, whether it's on, I mean, it's obviously better when it's not on the north wall, but it's still disruptive. Um, and again, it's, the blasting is just part of it. Yes, the blasting is what potentially can cause, you know, damage to the house potentially. Um, and the sound during the blast is very alarming. But it, you know, the tree removal is more than what we see and feel for those, you know, eighteen-second blasts that occur, you know, fourteen times over ten months. It's also the day-to-day rumblings of the site that we hear as early as six in the morning of the trucks backing up to 5:00 PM Monday through Friday, non-stop. So, that's it. Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Berg, did you have anything else?
Uh, no, thank you. Uh, I, I guess in terms of next steps, then is that we could, it's, what, it's, uh, early February. We could, uh, check in with you April as far as, uh, you know, ongoing plans. Unless we get an early Groundhog Season Shadow or whatever, and we have an early winter and they could start doing stuff earlier. So what's the next step, I guess?
I tend to go with the scientific method of when the frost is out of the ground.
Yeah, yeah, I know it.
Rely on rodents for my weather.
I'm the IT guy, yeah.
You don't trust rodents, Phil?
What's that?
You don't trust a rodent as a farmer?
Yeah. You know, he want, he, he expressed to us that he was planning on disabling the backup alarm when he went up there to construct it. He's going to get us a copy of this design. And so when we. when we get that and they let us know when they're going to start doing it, what we'll do is we'll reach out to you guys and let you know that that's on the horizon here and, you know.
Okay.
I have no doubt.
And they have.
Touch with us and letting us know what's going.
And they have discontinued blasting, uh, at least on the north wall for the time being then.
Yes.
But they, are they still excavating that? I'm assuming they're still doing some excavation back in that that new pit.
I don't know. We didn't go out there. It wasn't we just met them in their office there at the scale house.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I pre- again, I appreciate the uh effort, um, uh, and we'll, you know, we'll talk more in a couple of months and for an early spring, I guess.
Winter just started, come on.
Yep, I know it.
Like two months of late fall.
I'm not a skier. I I am glad we're having this via Zoom because I used to drive in all kinds of weather and now I prefer to, I haven't left my home office for 10 months and
You and Ellie both.
Yep. Okay, thank, thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, we're gonna log off. Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, um, that will bring us to the first portion of the public comment for this evening. If there's anybody in the public who would like to comment, this is the time. Okay, hearing none. Um, our next item will be the IT Services Contract Decision and um, Kevin and I went through this a little bit last week and I'll turn that over to him to speak to that.
Okay, um, we called references on Block Five, and I believe everyone got a copy of them. Actually, Susan called everyone. And, you know, I, you know, I was going with Block Five originally, and then after I checked, I'd even say I'm more inclined to go with Block Five even after we read some of the comments from other people. Um, one of the other, I'll call it a a top person, we've got a bad reference on. Um, and I did get it, take a phone call from Rockport one more time. And um, I just to let you know what they said to me, I said to him, I was concerned they were the lowest bid. And he said, well, we did that purposefully because we knew there was going to be a lot of project work with you guys. And I said, okay, well, that's not sitting good with me. It's like you didn't reference any project works. And what you're kind of telling me is you're, you gave us a lowball figure so you could get all this other projects. You know, um, I really, what I did learn of IT, and I don't pretend to know much, but it really, as the guy said last week, it is a rabbit hole. You have to have complete trust in the person that's doing your IT work. And that's what came back with the references. They use some of those other companies and they're happy with Block Five because they've been honest with them and straightforward. And that's what we got from them. So I'm ready to make a motion for Block Five, but before I make that motion, I want to ask the board. They're willing to give us a three year contract? We talked about a two year contract. And I tried to see if I can get any more out of him if we gave him an extra year. And he said he couldn't do anything more. And he said, to be honest, a third year is a risk. It's better for you on a three year because I'm, I don't know what my costs are going to be in three years for technology. So he said, that's actually giving you a better break because I'm locking in the cost. So I don't know how you feel. We we do have two years worth of projects. Um, I would make the motion either way, a one year, I mean, a two year or a three year. So I wanted to pull the board.
Um, if I can just interject real quick, I I think to what Kevin's saying, I mean, I think there were many good applicants, but we are just dealing with such a massive issue right now. So many things need to get fixed. It's not like we can really put them on par with each other. We just need to get to a baseline where everything's kind of working, and then there's a maintenance contract after that. And I think this is just what gets us to a point where we we can start looking apples to apples comparisons amongst you know, people putting bids in. This is the more people we have looking at this just makes me more and more nervous. How many locksmiths are you going to have there before someone's like, hey, there's a lot of good stuff to steal in here? It's, you know, I I think it would be smart to just do a two year contract and and get you know, where we need to be, and then we can send it out for bid again and and kind of reassess at that point.
Block Five, Block Five was the first gentleman spoke to us, right?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure.
I I'm in favor of a two year contract. You're right, Phil. It's so, we we're at ground zero, if not five feet under with the level of technology that we need. And so we need to work with a firm that we feel comfortable with that will lead us in the right direction. It's easy enough to make, send out to bid later on when we have a system in place that's worth repeating.
Okay, with that being said, I will make a motion to award the IT RFP to Block Five Technologies beginning April after town vote.
Second.
Assuming that town vote is positive, correct?
Well, yeah, yeah, we can if it's the default budget.
Well, I I don't know. I I do it immediately regardless. I'm telling you, we we have to do it.
Are we aware of what the contracted service line item is for the default budget?
It would be the same because I I I don't.
Yeah, I think that was a carryover from last year. So I think we need to make this happen like now.
Okay.
I agree, I agree.
I think we have a wide open screen door in our submarine.
I think we'll agree with that. I just call money we don't have.
I'll, I'll, I'll do my motion to to um award the RFP to Block Five for a term of two years.
Second.
Okay, motion by Kevin, second by Dawn. Sorry, Ellie, you got the earlier one.
No worries.
Uh, further discussion. Um, just for the board's knowledge, so we have 100K in the contracted services line item. And we also have 5K in the in the IT services. This in looking at the discussions and everything, this was basically just to be split between an IT upgrade and the PFOs thing. Um, I I think in talking with Sumner and our our path forward that we've we've spoken about in the past, I I feel confident taking this money and and allocating it to this, you know, it's what we planned on. And I think the other item will be will be covered by what we're remain, what's remaining in there. Um, so as far as from a budgetary standpoint, I think this is a solid move for us. And and from a security standpoint, I think this is a no brainer.
Agreed.
Anybody else? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Bless you. Riggs?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
St. James?
Yes.
And Wilson?
Yes.
All in favor?
I will contact Block Five tomorrow and have them draw up a contract and um, make a motion for Chairman to auth- to sign the contract.
Second.
Okay, motion and second.
Do we want to run that by Sumner?
I was just going to say that.
Yeah, we could do that.
I would suggest we do that.
All right, legal review.
Well, we can authorize the chair to sign it pending legal review. Legal review.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I said authorize the chair to sign it pending legal review.
Yep.
So that you, you know, if Sumner gets back to you Friday, you can, and he says it's go, it's a go. You sign it. You don't have to wait till the next board meeting.
Okay, was that a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Second, anyone?
Second.
All right. Second for Kevin. Sorry, Dawn, you got the last one. Um, it would be fair and equitable to everybody. Um, further discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Bless you.
Yes.
Riggs?
Yes.
Coons?
abstain.
St. James?
Yes.
And Wilson?
Yes.
Or Gaver?
Um, and continuing on, Kevin, the sale of town property.
Okay, so I went and talked to three different individuals that put in, including the new email from today. All right, and I I wish I could, let me see, if I could show you guys. I have it here. There. Let's see if I can show this.
So share a screen?
Yeah, yeah, this is sharing screen. Um, all right, so.
Up a little. Okay.
All right. Um, duh, duh, duh. This property right here is apparently three different tracts of town land. They are 20 foot wide each. And this person wants this land and this person wants this land as well. And we already went and looked at it. There are trees on here that Rich estimated would cost, you know, um, $2,000 to $5,000 to take down, and they are a danger to both properties. There's no reason for us to keep this property. Um, this individual also wants this property right here. Rich made the comment, we don't want to give this up because this is the lowest point for all of Great Pond Park. And this is where if we had to do any sort of culvert or anything, um, this is where we would do it. So what I was thinking of doing to be fair, and I talked to both of them, is if we give this individual one tract of land that would come down, straight down and take that property line and make it straight and give this person two tracts of land.
Give? You know how I feel about giving?
Would I, would I talk to him about do, the giving is the cost, the cost to pull down the trees is substantial. What I talked to him is they would pay any closing costs, survey and and lot line adjustments. And it would be deeded as merged property lines. There would be, there's no building that would take place on it. Absolutely no building. It's not a buildable lot that they're getting. Now, what happened today, very interesting enough, this person and this person, they're not, they're neighbors, but they don't really get along.
Of course.
Okay, so that's why I think it might be best, this is the one that contacted us, if we gave them these two tracts of land and gave this person this one, because then it it makes a nice even boundary mark straight down.
I like that.
Except that doesn't, now if you put that map up again, Kevin, that 176 cuts between them.
No, it is, this 177, it is 176 is the person that's looking for this track of land. This 176 takes the whole thing here.
Okay, so it's not 177?
No, it's not 177. And actually, you wouldn't know it, but there's a house here. There actually is already a house right here. And that's why they're the ones that called because the trees are a danger to them. So it would be my recommendation to pass this to the planning board and see if we could get um, Dennis Quintel to do the lot line adjustments and the people would pick up the costs for it. But we would need to know what the costs are that I could approach him.
Don't they have to go, don't they have to get approval for a lot line adjustment?
Correct. The 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 next step is if we're okay with this, we would send this to Planning Board and Conservation Commission. Um, but I'm just proposing where we're at right now, and they would have a stipulation that they have to take the trees down within a year.
Okay.
So that's my recommendation is to get rid of this parcel of land and keep this one. Because if we ever had to do something down there for drainage, this is the lot we want.
Okay.
My only thing is that typically, when something goes to planning board, they have to put up a deposit or money down for expenses and that we still do that in this case, that we require some kind of deposit. So we don't get into it with Dennis for a bunch of money and then them to say, well, we don't want to do it anymore.
Oh, come on, Rich, we're giving him free land. You don't want to cover the postage for him too?
No, I don't.
Wow, you're a tough soul.
I've just spent a lot of money on computer work. I don't want to lose money on land that we're giving away.
You can check what Rick said earlier. We went and we looked at all this property and it is, these trees need to come down. It's a, they're they're pine, they're junk. And it's a danger to those houses.
Well, that's my next point is that if they own the land, how can we tell them to take the trees down?
We can't.
It's going to be, it's going to be in the, um, because that's what this guy's concern was. He's like, listen, I don't want this guy to get this piece of land, then then change his mind not taking the trees down. So in the per, in the sales agreement or the deed agreement, that would be in the agreement.
What happens if they don't do it? Who's going to enforce that?
Then the town takes back the property.
Either that or put in there that we're hold harmless. You're right, in the sale agreement that the town's held harmless.
Yeah, that's was this guy's concern is if this guy doesn't take down the trees.
Have you run this by Sumner?
Yeah, well, Sumner came up with, not this per se, but this is, this, we already went to Sumner once on it. And he was the one that we were following the, we're following the RSA. I don't think this needs to go to Sumner for this, this, at least this thing here.
I mean, in all, in all seriousness, I I I agree. The the cost of the trees alone is worth more than the lot is worth. And right now, it's generating zero income for the town.
Right.
So this would be.
I'm fine with that as part of it. I'm, I'm just not fine with that we don't run it by Sumner on how to write the purchase and sale.
Well, we could do that.
Yeah, I I I to what Rich is saying, and that's my point is, I I don't know that we want to get tripped up in that. If the trees come down and we don't own the property anymore, it's not really our problem.
Okay, I could, if you're okay with it, I will contact Sumner and have this drawn up or whatever as a proposal for them.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
So that's one set of property.
Now, hang on, Kevin, can I ask you a question? Um, did you run that by uh Conservation and all the other interested parties to make sure that they?
No, it needs to go to them to see if they have an issue. That's the next step. But I wanted to know how we're splitting the baby before I went to them. Okay, the next one, here's my share screen again, Rich. Um, this area here, there's a paper road there and a paper road there. This is the whole area where we dealt with last summer with, summer with that logger that took down all the trees. And this is pretty much a clear cut. Um, this individual wants both these properties. Um, and the condition would be, obviously, it would be, it wouldn't be a buildable lot. Now, the problem comes I pulled the tax card for these, these two properties. And one is worth allegedly, it's marked as 11,700 and the other's marked at 27,500. Because we're, we're not paying the taxes, obviously, it's ours, but it's being assessed as a buildable lot. So what do we say to this individual if you, I agree, he should be able to pick these up? Because it makes him a nice yard and it gets this, turns this back to taxpayer property. But I don't know if you give it to him. I don't know what you offer to sell it for. I don't know. That's the question on the this. Do we ask him, would he consider it fair value?
Make him pull the stumps.
I think most of the stumps are already pulled, to be honest with you.
I was being funny, Kevin.
I know, but anyways.
I I I agree that that amount is.
Sorry, go ahead.
That amount is outrageous for those lots, especially if we deem them unbuildable, but I don't want to give them away at the same time.
What's the square footage?
One's a third of an acre. Uh, hold on, where's that written?
Okay, Susan lost her internet connection. Just want to let you know. So we're on recording though.
One's, one is 0.1 acre and the other's 0.3 acres. So the total for these two is 0.4 acres, a quarter of an acre.
I think in this scenario, where that is something where we don't have a pecuni- pecuniary interest, i.e. the trees needing to be taken down, it should probably just go to bid.
Well, he'd be the only one to bid, but do we ask him what he thinks is fair market? I wouldn't, I don't want to give this to anyone else because he's the only interested party.
That's fine, but I think that's where we can, you know, he submits a bid, we have an open period where bids can be submitted. And if he's the only one for a nonbuildable lot at parcels numbers 27 and 30, our nonbuildable lots submit bids by X date. And they can submit the bid and whatever they submit or what, or, but anyone can submit a bid on that.
I I feel, I kind of agree with Kevin on this. I think first we ought to ask him what he's willing to give for the property. And then if we think that's a reasonable amount, go with it because we don't want that to go to somebody else. You know, it it helps this lot and that's what. You know, it, it helps this lot and that's what we're trying to do in that area.
If it's assessed as a buildable lot, we, that means that someone, someone else gets it. They can't put a house on it. Right? Say you can get a septic plant? So is that what we want or do we want to make his lot less non-conforming?
Dawn, if I'm recalling, I don't see how you could build on here. I mean, this is on top of a ledge with boulders sticking out of it, isn't that the one I'm thinking of?
Yeah.
It is, it is. But you know what? He could do work with it and put a pool back there.
Oh, I know he could, but.
I, I would go with, I, I, I would rather approach this guy and see what he, he's willing to pay for it and then come back to the board.
Okay, so basically we're saying, yeah, we, we would be interested in selling him those two lots. What's his offer?
Yeah. Okay, so that, I will do that. Then the only other thing I will do, I do, I don't have the, I don't have the share screen with me again. But there's still that property on Hillsbury pasture and I want to go to both those neighbors and have a conversation if they want to put in bids for that lot that's, that person encroached on.
How big is that piece, Kevin?
I don't know. I, I thought that was, it's probably, it's, it wasn't a full building lot there. But it was probably at least a third of an acre.
So we want to, we want the same restrictions, right? Non-buildable?
Non-buildable and we'd have to keep an easement on it because there's a culvert on it all currently.
Okay.
So those be the two caveats. But it definitely improves their property. So if that's amenable to the board, I will approach those two and ask them to do a sealed bid.
You've been very busy this week, Kevin.
So, all right, well, just.
While I'm thinking of it, Dawn, you remember that one on Cardinal where the guy dragged us out there and was gonna move that and then he just?
He sold.
Barred down anyway?
Yeah, he sold and moved.
Yeah, um, we may want to approach the, the people on either side of that. I mean, let's get rid of everything like that, you know, these wet.
I do, I, I would rather, let's see how this all works out. And then, because we're still doing our, our policy, we got an idea of what we want to do. But I will contact those two and I will also approach Planning Board and Conservation. All right?
Good work, Kevin, thank you.
All right.
All right. Um, new business. Committee, uh, do we have any new business?
Uh, I don't think so.
Okay.
On the road, it's too bad he didn't get re-elected as county commissioner.
I do have, um, a new business. We, obviously everyone saw the, um, sock, the granite sign over on, um, the corner of Wadley Point and Main Street. We have a bill for that for fifty and fifty. And Bill Brock has generously offered to replace the sign that's there, just paying for materials at eight eighty, which I think is a, a fair price. And so we gotta pay for that. And I know Phil, me and you talked about it and we said we didn't want to surprise Rich and take it out of his budget without telling him. So I approached Ellie and, um, I said, Ellie, you're not gonna like me for this one. And I asked her to fall on the sword and she had some comments about it. She thought it was, we shouldn't be asking Rich for this. And I gotta be honest, I think this should be a board decision because I, I, I don't feel comfortable taking out, it, it's all the same taxpayer money. But I think the, there is a kitschy tacky thing to it that I think we should just find another line to take it from.
And I agree, I, 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 I couldn't, I could not face Rich with this. I could not. I didn't think it was appropriate. In a six million dollar budget, we need to find that money somewhere else.
We'll take it from Paul.
Sure.
I was gonna say, you won't let little kids have a playground, so take it from the playground.
There's no, there's no money. Also, just so you know, so it's, it's a total of twenty-three and some change. But Owen Tebow gave the town a check for three hundred and ninety dollars that he had extra from, that he raised from his project, so it offsets it.
Then that's part of the money right there.
I think Don Briggs should volunteer the rest of it.
Don Briggs got us the greatest slab, so I can't say, I can't.
Still chasing him for my dollar.
And he's probably, and he probably brought us Billy Brock too.
And your flagpole, and your flagpole.
And the flagpole, yeah, yeah. Might as well keep going, chief, you're on a roll.
Well, let me see if I can get a donation.
Maybe we talked to Cindy about where to take this money from.
We did and she said it should come from buildings and grounds somewhere. And, and that's where it came, then I said, yes, it's just, can we take it out of the general government line?
Yes, general government, I'm with that. We've got to have some unexpended funds.
Is that a motion, Kevin?
I make a motion that we pay for it out of general government.
Second.
Second.
Hey, motion and, uh, motion and second, further discussion. Um, I, I feel I have to point out that this isn't Rich's money, it's his department's money. And this is what it's allotted for. It's for buildings and grounds. And so if we wait till after Saturday when it's dedicated, I think the tackiness part of it is removed from the equation. Uh, I would be in opposition to this.
Well, the only thing is we get the bill and I want to, the guy gave us a great price. I gotta tell you, the guy that came out and raved it on site, charged us fifteen fifty. I called, um, another person and they gave us a price of thirty-five hundred dollars.
I know those guys aren't cheap. I mean, and I think across the board, everybody stepped up and, and really, you know, shake some trees to get some, a lot of things donated on this. And, and again, Owen did an amazing job with that bill. Everybody's done a great job on this, but I think, I mean, this is exactly what that money is for, is for building and, building and grounds.
Well, I agree with Kevin. It'd be nice to pay it right away. So why don't we pay it out of the general funds like they're saying and then maybe transfer the money later from department to department?
Okay, I'll go along with that.
Okay, further discussion. Roll call vote please.
Blesio?
Yes.
Riggs?
Yes.
Coombs?
No.
St. James?
Yes.
And Wilson?
Yes.
Four in favor, one against.
But before we leave this topic, I'm telling everybody rain, shine, hurricane, whatever. But are we considering the amount of people we're gonna have there? I mean, I haven't heard a person yet from any committee I'm on say they're not going. I mean, there's not much parking area, especially if we end up with a lot of snow. There's two major roads intersecting right there. I think we're gonna have a issue. And I'll defer that to our chief of police, but I mean, just, just the screen right here, we're talking six or eight cars. And that's before we even touch the, I mean, people that have left town are talking about coming back for this. And I, I.
You want a carpool, Rich?
I think a lot of people should carpool. I mean, that's my point. We're gonna have a major issue here.
Dawn, what are your thoughts?
We've got, um, Wadley Point Road, we can park, I'll ask Mark if we can park in his restaurant. You know, we can do a number of different things, park beside the road. I can make it one-way traffic to park on one side of the road. We can do a number of things.
I, I think also, um, we've got the highway barn right there. That, that entire area is gonna be paved.
Police station.
Um, we're having a service in the cemetery, so they are gonna plow that. So there's gonna be parking right there at Pine Grove Cemetery. I think as long as we have a detail officer who can kind of slow traffic on one eleven.
Yep.
Uh, as far as the social distancing part of it, that's gonna be.
Outside and both people have masks on. I don't think that's a concern either. According to the state officials.
Briggs, would you be able to get a sound system for it? Uh, Graham's saying he's got one.
Okay, yeah.
All right, um, Kevin, are you heading up the festivities there or who's, who's kind of helming this?
I don't know. What? We're gonna, we'll meet Briggs, Brian and Chief Keller and I'll, I'll meet up and we'll decide that. We'll, we'll, we'll make plans for it. We'll include Paul Butler with it.
Okay, I asked Paul on Saturday and he said, why don't you ask the other guy who doesn't want the playground? So, I am.
He didn't say that.
He did too, I got the text. He said, hey, are you, are you heading this thing up? And he said, why don't you ask the other guy who doesn't want the playground? Um, all right, so any other new business?
No, I have nothing.
Okay, committee liaison reports.
I have nothing. Night.
Uh, the inspectors are meeting till Thursday.
Except in Kingston, so it's a good thing.
All right, um, board business, the notice of violation. Susan, did you hear back from Sumner on that one?
I did not. No, I, I sent it along to him, um, about a week ago. Yeah.
Um, can you let me know tomorrow? Can you follow up with him? And if you don't hear, I will call him.
Okay.
I would like to get that out because that's just getting more egregious.
Across the street, they, they are actually working there. That's not part of it, right?
Uh, Robert was going to look at that, did he?
No, he didn't.
You want to follow up with him and see?
Yeah, I'll check with him. I'll talk to Robert and contact Sumner.
All right. Um, correspondence, applications and purchase orders. I have none in front of me, so I'm just gonna call that. Good.
They're at the office for you to come in and sign.
All right, and that technical memorandum, I'm assuming we'll just tackle. Is that something pressing or regarding the all-American assisted living or?
I think she was just notifying you that, uh, more testing is going to need to be done because the levels are up of nitrates, I think. So, correspondence at this point.
Well, while we're speaking about that, we haven't returned the remaining of their, remainder of their bond yet. That would suggest we don't until the communications issues are resolved there.
Is that still ongoing?
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's something we talked about a year ago.
Yeah, they fixed my end of it, but it, but, um, it bumped the fire department. They put new antennas and stuff, but I don't think, uh, the fire department stuff is still straightened out yet.
Well, they go there four times a day, so that shouldn't be a problem.
They've gone with all of the Hannafords there.
Is Graham still there with you, Kevin?
He is.
Could you ask him if they finally fix that part of it for him?
Say it again? Um, he said they haven't fixed it, but they're supposed to work on it today or tomorrow. So that means it'll be postponed due to snow.
Okay.
All right, um, I would move that we postpone the passing of the minutes until the following meeting. Um, because there is an item in there that has to be discussed and we need to do some research on. Isn't that correct, Susan?
Yes.
Um, I guess basically the wording of something that we found out after the fact isn't allowed to happen, so. And then I had one item for non-public.
Me too. Might be the same item, but me too.
Okay, um, so unless anyone else has anything, I would make a motion that we move to a non-public session as per RSA ninety-one dash A semicolon three regarding a legal matter.
Okay, Ellie.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote please.
Blesio? Riggs?
Yes.
Coombs?
Yes.
St. James?
Yes.
And Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, non-public at eight thirty-four.
All right, thanks for tuning in, Tori.